We'll call the meeting of the Ways and Means Committee together today, Tuesday, September the 6th, 2016, at 4:10. Ian, would you please call the robe?
I'm in.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Maranse.
Here.
Beget.
Here.
Here.
Lux.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes of July the 5th. Motion approved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll allow for public input. Anybody that would like to address the podium, state your name and the issue that you'd like to speak on behalf of, and you'll have an opportunity to address Ways and Means. Seeing no one's coming forward, under our next order of business, from petitions and communications from the sheriff's office, we have the 416 grant application.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two, we have the dive rescue van. This is seeking approval of replacing the old ambulance.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions for discussion? John, did you want to talk on this at all?
I gave you all some photographs of the van. It's Midland County's current dive rescue van, which is an older truck, but it's been gone through thanks to the Dow Corporation. It also is equipped with equipment to recharge the dive tanks, which currently we have to pay to have recharged, which the system itself, just to do that, is worth about $5,000. And it's a good-running truck. It's been stored inside at Midland County, and it will suit our purposes much better than the outdated military 24-volt old ambulance that we're using now.
Commissioner Krieger.
Sheriff, so it's really rigged up pretty cool. And my question is, how many will this accommodate as far as our dive team? Do we have three, four?
I believe there's seating for five divers in there.
Okay.
And it can hold the equipment for the entire team if need be.
I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Beget?
Mutual aid, they'll be helping out Midland also then with incidents they have over.
If they have a drowning, yes, we would do that as we do with Tusco line here on in Saginaw.
Anybody else have any questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. John, and while you're up there, besides passing out some pictures on this new vehicle, you did pass out some pictures, and I don't think it's on the agenda that I can see, Honda the drug. Did you want to speak on that?
Yes.
Maybe Nick can get a picture of this as well.
It's in regard to the drug take-back program. The picture you have there, the drugs we took in, and we have been averaging this since we set this up, that's one week's take on drugs, the picture you have there. So it's a very, very successful program. I know there's people that say we don't do anything about the drug problem. This is a very successful program, and there's a lot of people that need to get rid of it. Some of these are scheduled drugs in there, not all of them, but they're not on the street where they're being resold and getting into the criminal element. And I consider this very successful and thank the commissioners for helping with getting this program started. I know Commissioner Herrick was very big on pushing us to get it going.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just wondered if we could somehow get this out, you know, like on Facebook or something, just to show, you know, what, I don't know, I don't do any of that stuff, but, you know, it'd be nice to see, people can see, like you said, how effective this program has been, you know, because I think it's, people don't understand, they think that people just come in, you know, a few people come in every week. This is amazing. I mean, when I saw the picture, I was amazed at how much stuff could be added in one week, and especially if that's going on week after week. It's obviously successful, so it was a great idea.
Again, thank you.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, Sheriff, back when this was starting, and we talked with Troy, we talked about the possibility of having some of these located at some of the township halls. I don't know if there's been any progress forward, like with Hampton or Bangor or Merritt or whoever, if it's something that would help.
The problem is that it has to be posted 24/7. There has to be a body there, a law enforcement body there, 24/7. And I think it would be counterproductive if it was somewhere where they could be stolen from where they're being dropped off. But this is very, very successful. You know, if you get a little bit off the street, it's a lot. And like I said, it's not all scheduled drugs, but there's a lot in there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Teel.
Yeah, just Teel, you wanted to do the picture on the, Johnny, on this as well, maybe else, but the picture on the drugs in the bin, make sure their names are visible when people blow it up to see who's taking what.
Right.
It is an issue of that. Second, what about having something to drop off, like the Hampton Township Police Office?
Like I said, I don't think they're in there 24/7. That's the problem. That was looked into, and it has to be cleared with the federal government, the DEA, in order to do it. And it has to be manned 24/7.
Commissioner Beget.
Yeah, being in the medical field, a lot of people get these drugs, and then they want to bring, you know, they don't finish taking them, or they have a side effect with them, they want to bring them back. But once they're out, you can't take them back, you know, because you don't know what's been happening to them. So that's one thing.
No.
And there are expiration dates on a lot of these drugs. You have to look at expiration dates. A lot of people have held it for a long time in their cabinets, and they're expired, so they need to get them back. And then there's the scheduled drugs that are in the cabinets that the kids, people can get out then, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to, I think we were just speaking on, thank you very much. There was no motion on that. Thanks for the information, John.
We're still in favor.
We still are in favor of that. Number three, we have the OHSP Traffic Enforcement Grant for 2016.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the probate court, the Child Care Fund, we're seeking approval of the 2016 and '17 Child Care Fund budget.
So moved.
And that goes along with the additional $525,000 for, I believe, this year's budget. Moved and supported. Commissioner Lux.
So do we have enough in '16 and '17 so that we don't have to do this part next year?
How you doing? John Torres, Deputy Court Administrator. We see operations of Probate and Juvenile Court. Yes, so what we're asking for is, we originally appropriated $425,000 for the county budget, but we're asking for the additional $525,000. So we have that here in our budget, but what we look at is two different budgets. We have a county budget, which begins in January and ends in December, and then we have our state budget, which begins in October and ends in September. So what we have built into this budget is the amount of money that we believe that we will need to get us through this fiscal year at the county level. So our hope is that we don't have to ask for any more money. The one issue that we run into always with foster care, and many of our kids in our program, is that it's variable. We can't always predict exactly who's going to come into Bay County and what kinds of children we're actually going to take into foster care. So as I've mentioned before, some of these kids are extremely high need, whether they be autistic, mental health disturbances, or having physical disabilities. And as we get those children in, the rate of care goes up substantially. So this is what we do project that will get us through this county fiscal year through December.
I think the question, John, that Commissioner Lux asked was, a couple years ago last year, we went from about $450,000 to $975,000. And it's pretty tough to understand what you're saying.
Right.
Has the care or the services required for these kids increased that much? Do you anticipate this to continue, or?
Well, we're hoping that it won't continue. But if we look over the last two years, we saw the spike starting about 2014 to 2015, and now getting into 2016. So we are seeing that spike go up. I've been here for about a year now, and since I've been on board, I look at my budget, and I look at the amount of kids that I have. It's probably about seven to eight kids, so less than two handfuls of kids that actually take up about 75% of my budget on that cost of care. So if we get a child who is extremely costly, their cost of care could be upwards of about $9,000 to $10,000 a month. So the cost of care, from what I've seen, is getting expensive, and it is getting high. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to look and exhaust all measures that we can. Myself, the head court administrator, Kim Mead, and Judge Clyte as well, our chief judge, to try to look at what we can do to try to get these costs down as best as we can for these kids.
So these high-cost individuals are being placed somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not being in.
No, they're in institutional placement, so they're getting one-on-one care. And that's what gets so costly, is because they need 24-hour basically monitoring and being able to work with them. And I think that one of the things that we've seen over the past few years, some of my background comes in mental health, having worked in a mental health court for years, is that we're seeing more and more diagnoses of individuals. So things that weren't originally diagnosable, autism as we look at, those now are more common and more prevalent. The rate of autism has gone up substantially over the years, and many of these kids, when they do come into foster care, they're not actually even identified as being mentally ill or autistic until they've come into care, because now we're giving them that full breadth of treatment that they weren't getting before when they were being neglected in the homes.
Commissioner Beget.
The Association of Counties, the Health and Human Services Committee has been working with the state on some of these placements, you know, because some are more costly than others. And there's been negotiations going on, and I think there's some more meetings coming up this fall about the placement and the cost, and how to reduce cost as possible.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're all in on that, because that is something that, one of the things that I attempt to do, you know, in my capacity and my position, is to try to get out to the community and talk with some of these facilities to figure out how we can drive down some of these costs, how we can get the bottom line down a little bit more. Even though we want to provide for these kids, we want to do it at the best cost that we can, so that we're not costing the county, and we can utilize our resources for other things, or for other children in our court system.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Lux?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that looking forward in the '16-'17 budget, that we're covered, you know, because the last two years, we've had to add, you know, access, well, this year, $525,000. So we need to look at how we're budgeting so that next year, we might not have to add another $400,000 or $500,000 to it.
Correct, correct.
I'd rather give money back.
Right, exactly.
Than have to come up with it sometimes. I know these guys do, too.
I think Bob had a question.
I want to request that items being seen, be referred to the board without recommendations, so I can look at more of the financial implications, but haven't had an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Lux, a friend of hers also has a Title IV cooperative reimbursement, and I'd like to talk to him about.
Sounds, well, we haven't gotten to C yet, but we could do, refer this, address it next Tuesday, and Bob can give us some more information. That'd be fine with me. Anybody have a motion to refer?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And under C, which is the friend of the court, the 2017 through 2021, signed a 4D cooperative reimbursement contract. I think we, you know, I've had an opportunity to review it, and it was, you know, if Bob has any questions, he can give us some more information between now and then. That's fine with me. Motion to?
Motion to refer.
Or? Motion's been made, and we're going to support it. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under D, from the Director of Environmental Affairs and Community Development, this is the BCATS MPO, Organized Coordination and Planning Area Reform. Move the resolution. Support. Moved and supported. Laura, do you want to talk on this? I mean, it looks to me like, or you have somebody there you want to speak on next? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Sheriff.
Good evening.
This is a proposed rulemaking that has come down from Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration, and they're asking all the MPOs to start taking a more regional look at planning. And what they're suggesting in this reform is, they're giving MPOs three options to merge, to redraw their planning area boundaries, or essentially do unified planning documents, which would be our Long Range Plan, which is our 30-year plan, and our TIP, our Transportation Improvement Program, which is our four-year plan. And this is all based on your urbanized boundaries. So we have, Saginaw's urbanized boundary comes into Bay County and Franklinburg Township, real small. We have a standing memorandum agreement with Saginaw MPO that MDOT recognizes. We coordinate with both Saginaw MPO and the Midland MPO very well on a lot of issues with our Long Range Plan, our travel demand model that goes into the Long Range Plan. Quite frankly, we see it as trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. We do coordinate with MCAG as well through the Governor's Regional Prosperity Initiative, so we make sure that there's transportation issues that are being looked at regionally, and not just within our BCATS or Saginaw MPO or Midland MPO as well. It could have some effects on, if this goes through, nothing's official yet, but it could affect staffing for all three MPOs. It could affect the funding that comes down to the local agencies. That includes Bay Metro.
And then, is this something that's coming from the feds?
Yes.
And who's pushing it? I mean, have we talked to, you know, our Congress folks and senators to see exactly whether?
I have not personally, but this is something I know, this affects 10 out of the 13 MPOs in the state. Our statewide organization, Michigan Transportation Planners Association, has commented on this document. We've all agreed to it. We asked that they, just like we're asking in this resolution, that they take this offer off the table, and any reforms like this should be addressed through legislation. I know our national MPO organization has asked for the same thing. It is not a popular reform at the local level.
All right. And then, this is just something you want us to?
Want you to be aware of, and if something does come down with this.
To acknowledge that we don't support this.
Correct.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, not only would this affect us negatively with funding, but it would also probably affect maybe some of the routes that we're running, maybe out to the colleges?
It could, because you-
And it puts a whole nother layer of bureaucrats in place?
Yeah, even, you know, whether or not we have to merge, but even, yeah, even if we have to have these unified planning documents, this puts another level of committees and approvals that we have to go through, and just makes our already long planning process even longer.
I think we already have plenty of bureaucrats, so I'm glad we're not supporting this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Beget?
I'm on the Bay City Area Transportation Study. It was an unanimous vote to support the opposition of the rules on the committee level.
Sounds good. Seeing, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Under D, from the Director of the Division on Aging, this is Service Coordination Agreement with Bay County Child and Senior Citizens Center, Golden Horizons.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Tammy, maybe, I got reading this, if you can step up for a minute. Reading this, and I think, Golden Horizons does do a good job with elderly folks. Is there anybody else out there that does this type of work?
Particularly Adult Daycare Center in Bay County, no. They also receive funding with Region 7, so we do coordinate that adult daycare and caregiver program with Golden Horizons.
So they're the only ones doing the work?
For an adult daycare.
Yeah, and that's what we're asking for.
Correct. Well, we're asking for coordination that will keep that agreement for the coordination of services, that will do referrals between the agencies.
Between Golden Horizons and?
Division on Aging.
And that's not happening right now?
It is happening right now. What, this was brought to my attention from Golden Horizons, they needed to have their agreement updated through their Region 7 contractual agreement, and it hadn't been updated in a few years, so that's why it was brought to my attention, now that they wanted it updated to continue those service agreements.
So if there were anybody else providing that, it's probably not something we do?
It's done pretty much naturally amongst the agencies, any human service agencies. That's what our case coordination workers do. They coordinate services, whatever the need is for that client throughout Bay County. So if there is other services that that client would need, you do reach out and do that coordination with other services.
They would, Golden Horizons?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any other questions, or any questions in regard to this? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Deputy Equalization Director, this is the L-29, or 2016 Tax Rate Request. So moved. Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Kelly, you want to say anything on this? This is just an annual.
It is just an annual. However, as in the letter states, it does need to be approved now before the end of the month, but because we have elections in November, it may have to be relooked at.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions? If there are none, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Director of Recreation and Facilities, a floor scrubber for the Civic Arena, up to 6,500.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Krieger.
So, Kristin, we do most of our projects, I mean, we don't bring in any outside vendors to come in and do any of this type of work on the floors. This is all done in-house?
Correct.
Okay. And how old is the scrubber we got right now?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's very old, and I would probably say it's probably original to the building.
Okay.
And what's happening is it's breaking down one or two times a year, and it's costing so much to repair it that it doesn't make sense to keep repairing it.
Okay.
So, and it's continually breaking down.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Recapitalization, it's a good thing. It's a good thing that the bonds are going to be paid off this year, too, right?
That's right.
All right. Nobody else has any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two would be water storage tank at the Civic Arena.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? This is probably original as well.
It is, and we have two water storage tanks. One's 500 gallons, and this specific one's 750 gallons. And what the water tank supplies is all our domestic hot water, but also it fills our ZAMs every hour. So every hour, each ZAM takes 200 gallons of water, and so we're really cycling through that hot water really quickly. And this specific one is starting to leak, and it's starting to deteriorate. The other one has already been replaced. So after we replace this, we should have a long stretch where we don't need to replace one for a while.
Well, you're talking the Zamboni, right?
The water tank needs to be replaced. The water tank, in part, fills the Zambonis.
Yeah, but you're not filling that every hour, are you?
Mm-hmm. 200 gallons of Zamboni, because you put the water in the Zamboni, and that goes on the ice, and that refreezes, and that freezes.
Well, I know how that works, but you're not, you're not using that Zamboni every hour.
Mm-hmm. Yep, every hour. When we're busy. I mean, if there's nobody on the ice, we don't obviously use it, but-
12 hours a day, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we have two tracks for the skid steer.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Krieger.
So, Kristin, will we be able to sell the old one? Is there any value to it, scrap, or is it beyond that?
Not that John mentioned to me, but he said that there's holes in it, and it's very, it's in really rough shape. So I could get back to you on that. I can ask him, but I'm not a hundred percent-
I'm just curious if there was some value, we might be able to recoup out of the old one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Teel.
I did my homework on it. These are the treads that go around with the skid. So if they've got holes in them, you manually are going to want to buy.
Okay. Except for the source.
And they run anywhere from $1,400 to $1,700 a piece, so it's a $4,000 play, and probably wouldn't, or maybe some other things you could buy to go with them as well, to put them on.
Right. And I know that Tim has called around, and he got a pretty good price, because our original pricing was a lot higher than $4,000, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Lux?
Yeah, those tracks are rubber. Heavy-duty rubber, and so they work out, like the tires in it, and as you work, you pivot with it, work with it, you know. And it doesn't take much to rupture a tire, it doesn't take much to rip off a track.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
All right. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number four would be the exterior doors at the community center?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, we have winter storage at the fairgrounds. They're recommending a reduction in winter storage rates from $250,000 to $200,000.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Or moved and supported? Any discussion? Commissioner Harry?
I just think this is a great idea, because there's a lot of people out there that are storing trailers and stuff now, and, you know, as long as we got a billing that's not being billed, and we can use it to increase revenue, some, you know, that can be used for something else, we know that. And I looked at the, you know, 13, 14, 15 revenue, and you get to see, when you increase rates, people can go somewhere else, you know, but that's a great, indoor storage, you know, that's what everybody wants, you know, so it'll fill up again, especially at that price. A great idea. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under "A," we have payables. Proposed resolution is attached.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Finance Officer, we have budget adjustments.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two would be the analysis of the general fund equity for 2016.
Move very soon.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number three would be the executive directive 2007-11?
I'm very eager.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anybody have any referrals, any unfinished business? Commissioner Krieger.
Yep, if I could, Joel Strauss. Back a few months ago, we had the DEQ in here to talk about spoils that were dropped in Bayside Park in Bangor Township. And off that meeting came a committee meeting that was put together, a group at Bangor Township. And we had a meeting last, was it Thursday, Joel?
Last Thursday, yes.
Joel was there to listen to the conversation and to talk about the expense that's going to be incurred by having periodists come out and do samplings of the soils. I believe the total on it could be somewhere around $24,000. And we talked about the possibility, because it is a health-related issue to what's in that park, that possibly we would be able to support some of that expense through our health department. So Joel, I'll kind of come back to you a second, and you can bring everybody up to date. It'd be something that-
It'd be something that next week, after our full board meeting here, I will be going to Bangor Township, and if it is something that we agree we could do to help support them and finding out whether or not there is indeed a health issue, would be much appreciated. So, Joel?
I've looked at the budgets, the two more applicable budgets, which would be the 601, Administration, 615, Environmental Health. We've identified about $9,000 potentially that we could utilize for that testing. And I want to do say this about the testing, is we were originally given a quote from DEQ back in the spring, which they anticipated was about $3,000 per quarter acre, and I believe there's 27 acres there. So if you did the math on that, in order for the site to be tested, be well over $300,000. So this is a good, it's a bargain, I guess for lack of a better term, to do this. It also helps us with our due diligence in investigating potential areas of, or causes of disease and disability in the county. And given the fact that there's a lot of concern about this in Bangor Township, we're pretty confident that on a conservative basis, we can at least utilize $9,000 of current available funding. The DEQ also indicated that they were going to look into the, into their resources and determine whether or not that they would be able to provide some match or, or pay for some of the testing, maybe all of the testing. And Bangor Township had indicated about $5,000 potential in addition to that as well. So I would make the recommendation to the board that, and we can do this in a more formalized manner next week, that the board authorizes the Health Department to, to utilize unspent funds on that specific testing. Now, the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to convene some of the folks that have indicated that they've had health issues as a result of the exposure to this, and to try to put together a basic epidemiological study so that if there are indications that there is causation, not correlation, but causation, that we can refer this to either the Department of Health and Human Services or CDC for, for the guidance and testing.
The other thing I would add is, when this testing does start, the DEQ has agreed to be there on site so that as they pull their core samples at various depths, they will also take some of that material back and have it tested in Lansing, I believe. So we'll have what Peerless comes up with, and we'll have another opinion from the DEQ, so it isn't just a one sample by one entity, they'll be across. So hopefully, whatever one finds will be the same as what the other finds. It's kind of like a butterfly study. Well, Commissioner Durand.
Just have a question. Now, on these borings and cores, or whatever you're calling them, they're taken at different depths, not just a surface, they're going down into the?
Correct.
Because that was a concern, I attended one of the meetings, and they didn't just want the surface, okay, so it's going down into the?
Yep. Some of the concern is, th- those spoils have been dropped there more than just one time. Right. So there's different levels, plus all of this happens on, on top of an old coal mine. So there's concerns that there's a possibility that there may have been old transformers that were left there, and back in those days, those transformers were actually cooled with PCBs.
Yes.
So we're hoping to be able to get the information that's needed, the health study, the samplings, so we can put to bed that it is safe. They could use it as a playground, which is what it was supposed to have been, based on a court decision back in the 60s. Unfortunately, individuals chose to use it as a spoil site, even though it wasn't supposed to happen. So that's a whole different issue. Right now, the concern is on the health of the individuals that live around that disposal site.
The DEQ put it there?
Well, it wasn't the DEQ that put it there. There actually is information showing that at one time, the Corps of Engineers had dredged out the center of the Collin River to help with flooding conditions. And what they would do is they'd dig out the middle of that river, and then the barge that they had would actually go into the sandbar located near the spoil site, and then they trucked it over and dumped it into that site. So it did all start with the core, but then there were different times that the township had agreed to use that spoil site on different dredgings, including Lagoon, instead of taking it out to the island. So now here we are faced with a mess of whether it's safe or it's not safe. So we're hoping to find out.
Do I need to add anything?
No, I think you covered your bases. I'll get with Ian to have something formal for the next, for our full board meeting, so that I can go to the township next Tuesday and let them know that the township will help with some of the expense. Okay, thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else have anything else under unfinished business? Any new business? I don't believe we have a closed session.
I do not.
Any miscellaneous announcements?
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?